...was utilized to make whatever remedy was necessary based on that service request. So, if you want to look at it as a two-sided coin, there's a service request where something happened and we asked somebody to go out and investigate something. And if work is derived, where someone needs to follow up and actually perform the work, there's a work order side of the coin. And in both cases, the system will track not only the requests that come in from the individual citizen and the address and so on, but the work that resulted from that request. So, again, this is intended to be a tool that will give you a better understanding and me a better understanding of where work is being performed in town, what work is being performed in town, and what it took and what it costs to do that work in town.
So, under that description, the asset management is managing people? Is that true?
People, it'll include materials and equipment that they used to do that work as well. But it doesn't track the repairs to the equipment. The repairs to equipment take place in the CFA program, as I mentioned earlier.
Right, but when I'm Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and in addition to the equipment or whatever, part of the work order process that I'm completely misguided is going to track the main breaks, it's going to track... So, when they go out and do something, you'll be able to run the data to show how many main breaks you've had over a certain period of time, like the age of the pipes that they're working on, things of that nature. So, the base of it, as Mr. Galis mentioned earlier, is going to tie into GIS to pull all that data in, so we can then analyze the data for trending and which mains need to be replaced and things like that as well.
Right, and I get that part, but I guess what I'm looking for and what we... the conversations we've had before are tracking all the rest of the city's assets, those being, you know, trucks and pieces of equipment and front-end loaders and augers and our snow plows and even the chief's desks and stuff. And I thought that that was one of the issues that were brought up by the auditing firm of how we tracked the city's assets. And now, we're going to get into, I feel, or I hope we're not going to get into verbal semantics of what assets are and all that, but I think you know what I mean, and it doesn't sound like that system is doing what I'm talking about. Is that correct? And if it is, what are we doing to address that issue?
As Mr. Galis mentioned, the vehicles are... and the maintenance stuff is tracked through CFA, which was installed a couple of years ago. So far as the tracking of the city's assets, we did go through a fairly elaborate process with the auditors, where you may recall, they did concede that over 75 to 80% of their clients use Excel as the methodology to do that. So, they've since rescinded their comment about the tracking, since we do do it in Excel, track the assets in Excel like the majority of their other clients do. So, that audit notice was rescinded in this past audit cycle.
And I remember it being rescinded, but I thought and answered my question, and I'm not going to give up on it, on tracking all the rest of the assets. I was led to believe that this was doing that. Maybe it was my wishful thinking that, I'm not saying otherwise. But I just think that we need something, so if that... if you're telling me the best we can do is an Excel spreadsheet, which isn't a terrible thing, or a database of some kind, I would like to know that that's functional across all the departments and all the assets are taken into account. That's my concern.
Did you want to add to that, or no? No?
Not particularly. I mean, I agree in...
The next person, Solomon Winger.
Thank you. How much dollars do we already have into the work order system that was being referenced here? I know this was introduced to us about eight or nine months ago, and we decided to bring it on. Is it because there was an upfront design cost, correct?
I'll defer to Mr. Hausman on this one.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, this fiscal year, we did have the upfront design cost of the system, the purchase of the software, the licensing and such. There's still money to expend this fiscal year to finish off the training and the rollout, and that's included in this year's budget. So, the budget was around $30,000 this year, and not all of that's been spent yet, but we plan to finish that at the end of the year.
So, that $30,000 was the upfront?
Yes, that was...
Build it and load it and...
Loading it with all of the resources, basically, the personnel, the machinery, the materials that would be used on different work orders, setting it up, all sort of the pick charts that people could use to then generate the work orders.
Okay, and then according to the sheet here, it looks like we're going to look at the same cost every year, basically, almost?
I think those are sort of more nominal costs at this point. I don't know exactly the amounts, but there is going to be a recurring software licensing fee, and there will be updates needed to the system, be it change in personnel, change in pricing of materials, change in pricing of personnel, change of, I don't know, trucks, plows, whatever have you. The system will have to be updated on an annual basis. Now, whether that cost is accurate for four years out from now, I couldn't speak to that necessarily.
Okay, because where I'm going with it is $30,000 a year scares me. I mean, it's a lot, and I look at the GIS maintenance, it's $30,000, 30 plus 30 is $60,000, and that's an employee. So, you know, I don't want to get into, you know, these annual recurring charges of, you know, high magnitude. So, what is the realistic number that should be put there?
I can ask our GIS manager.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add something first, before I go to you, Jeff. Is this program through Baxman Woodman, too? I know the tree locations are touching the trees and everything is through you, through Baxman Woodman. Is this program, too?
We're managing the installation and the design of it, but the actual program is from City Works. It's a software package, basically. Yes, we are helping the city implement the...
So, are you hosting this one, too?
We would be hosting, yes.
So, is... Tell me if I'm understanding this wrong. So, it's $40,000 for Baxman Woodman. Let's use that. I don't know, is there another company?
Yeah, there are other companies involved, yes.
Okay. But is it fair to say, for this circumstance, to say Baxman Woodman, even though it's not Baxman Woodman Company?
Yeah, our employees will be working on this project, are currently working on this project, yes.
Okay, it's your employees.
Yeah.
So, we got 30,000 there and 30,000 for the other one. So, it's $60,000 going to one company. Now...
Kind of, I mean, there's a lot of software.
What happened? I keep on going back to this. What happens if you and I hear tomorrow?
The information is all within the city. I mean, we basically just host on the sites on the website, basically.
Okay, but you're doing the hosting, so is there... I mean, there's other hosting.
Yeah, so the system can be moved to another website, the city chooses.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the hosting cost? Do we have a contract on this? Go ahead.
The one important thing to remember that I think we skipped is that built into that cost, it was factored, hey, if this, you know, Public Works was the jump-off point for other departments, so that other department costs for startup and modeling, like, let's say, building department, was factored into these numbers, so it's not just hosting fees. If it worked in Public Works, then the logical step would be moving on to building department or moving on to finance or wherever. So, it was... that was always in play as well to expand with it. So, this is just not a licensing thing. There was also some building blocks to the system. And I don't know how much the exact license fee is at this time. I don't think Lou has the exact number either.
Okay.
Could this conversation be rolled into the laptop discussion for that next committee meeting, so we really understand the cost going out, out years before we dive into this, and then face what $60,000 a year and, you know, so we know where we're going, how much it costs, and how to fully utilize it with the infrastructure and the cars if we're going to, you know, go that route? I'd really appreciate that.
So, you're saying to have it back in three weeks?
Is that possible, three weeks, and break it out?
Nick?
The system with the GIS? Okay.
Nick, is it okay? Well, you've got to do the work, so I just want to make sure you're going to get it done. What?
That's not you, right?
With... Okay, but they've got to talk together. Okay. Okay, all right. Go to the next page.
Sure, the next one is the IT strategic plan. Say there's three components there. Two of the last two items are of a similar vein, which is why they're called one component. You will notice the very first one on there is something that I know is something you've... some of you have been asking for for a while, is the new website, the city website. It's going to be the primary goal of the IT division for fiscal 14. We recently did the visual upgrades in the control room using the PEG money, the public education and government franchise fees from Comcast and AT&amp;T. We have some quotations to upgrade the audio portion of that, should the council desire to, and use the PEG fees for that as well. And then, there's two, the email retention hardware and the live virus and web traffic firewall items in here as well. And so, the website and the email retention and live virus come to a total of 120,000. The control room, since it would be reimbursed to the city through those PEG fees, overtime is effectively free or cost neutral, so there's no costs, specific costs associated with that due to the fact that we recoup those fees over time with the quarterly remittance of those PEG fees.
Are you waving to me, or you want...
Brad, I know we talked about this a few weeks ago, and if Nick is done with whatever he's doing, he'll be able to start the new website earlier, possibly. I mean, I know it's... we're talking a couple of months from now. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. My friend down there, Solomon Woods.
I don't know if you can answer the question, but as far as getting the website going and Nick getting the website going, is Nick building the website? Is Nick designing the website? Isn't this an outside... don't we have outside vendors doing some of this stuff? Can't some of that stuff?
Why don't we bring Nick out?
Yes, we will have outside vendors. I still have to basically run the whole project, though. I have to tell them what to do, what data to get. I have to meet with all the departments and find out what they need on the website or what they would like, format, the layout, how we're going to tie in with social networking, how we're going to tie in with our feeds. There's still a lot to do.
So, none of that has been started or done?
Nope, absolutely not.
So, we're at square one right now?
We're at square one.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
There is one thing that I want to keep up on with the website that we have now of going through that on a weekly basis to make sure that it... there's stuff that's not in there that's old, so... and of course, Channel 6, too. Okay. Oh, you want to add to that?
Yeah, there's one more thing I'd like to bring up. Some of you may have heard about the website contest we were in. Some of you may not have. We entered a contest to see if we could win a website from Civic Plus. We did not win, but we were a runner-up, so we would get $5,000 off the site if we decide to go with Civic Plus. So, that's kind of a little added bonus. I figured I'd throw that in, since we're talking about the website.
How much is this?
Cost and what they can do versus, you know, if somebody else is significantly cheaper, then we'd want to go with them, but it'd just be a bonus if we did go with Civic Plus.
So, is any other commentary? We'll move on to the... Next one is the streetlight installations. Again, this is kind of a pot of money we set aside in case there's some residents or a street or a neighborhood that feels that they want to have a new streetlight installed. There's a survey process that the city does and things of that nature, and then it would come out of these funds. We have utilized it a little bit in the past. This year, it doesn't look like we're going to use any, but we do put this money aside every year for that purpose in case it should come up.
Board for need any streetlights? You need any streetlights? Okay, we'll talk later. Well, go ahead.
If there's any other questions or comments, we'll go on to the strategic plan. As I referenced earlier, the city manager gave a presentation a few weeks ago about the strategic plan, and these are the costs associated with the projects that were either previously started and just going to completion. Actually, both of these were previously started programs going into completion. And you can see the costs associated with those two programs. The facade program, there's a breakdown there because there are two different aspects of the program. Leave it up for questions.
Solomon...
Eugene Wesley.
Okay, Eugene.
The facial building for... that you're putting in there, have we got the hard numbers yet? And my concern with this is we're putting in CIP for $450,000 this year. My question is, I thought this council made a commitment, if the buildings choose not to take part in this, and I'll sit up here today and tell you that I'm not going facade someone's whole building on the city cost. So, my question is, if you put $450,000 away from... and I'll go back to the new sign, too. Are we looking for a new electronic sign, since we took the one down from the wastewater treatment plant? Is that the $50,000 is going to relocate that sign? Or are we looking to put a new sign? And then, we'll go right down the line on that. Front Street, cost estimate, I don't know, $200,000. I don't know what you're planning on doing with that, because we don't know what the grade construction project's going to be over in that intersection. So, if you could answer briefly, really brief, the $50,000, the $200,000, and the other $200,000, I might... wouldn't spend $200,000 if these buildings don't take effect in this program. I just can't justify that.
I appreciate the courtesy. Just continue to go back and forth.
I'll start with the signs. It does not cover the electronic sign that was down at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a separate topic, so I figure we can cover that a different time. What this does cover is the Lakota study that's being done now. We had our introductory meeting with them about a month ago, I think it was, and they're going to come up with a design template for the city to follow for their signs coming down the... coming down the road in the future, so whether it be street signs, wayfinding signs, welcome signs. And as part of doing that plan, the concept is to, hey, if we did this plan, let's allocate money per year. So, that's that. That's that first allocation of hard dollars for the actual signs.
Okay, so why would we not put money aside for new electronic sign? Because you didn't put money away to relocate the electronic sign that we took down? Or is that electronic sign going to sit in that yard for two years or whatever, three years, until we decide what to do with it? My question is, if it's going to sit there for two years, you might want to just get rid of it and buy a new one wherever we go with it. Because sitting out in the open there, it's not even covered, and it's under... it's wide open right now. So, my question here, I want that sign, make a decision, do with that sign. It ain't in there.
Well, again, this... the sign you're referring to was not part of the Lakota plan and not part of the strategic plan.
Again, will we not put in the CIP for that sign?
Again, there's a couple of different scenarios. I... we can go over them tonight. I didn't know that was on the agenda.
All right, what about the building?
Okay, the building facade and the parking lot have been broken down into two separate fees, and the plans, the architectural plans have been sent out for me to get bids. I talked to the architect today on another topic, and apparently, they're having trouble getting some of the information from the structural engineer that did the inspections and the design. He has not yet submitted his plans to the company that's doing the bid estimate for us, so I don't actually have a hard figure on that. I think we kind of discussed this, and, you know, if the city agrees to put... I mean, we have to back up one second. We finally have two owners that are willing to work with the city and put money into their buildings to improve these facades. So, I would think, you know, if a $200,000 figure towards the building facade program would be the maximum the city would contribute, I mean, if the cost comes out that the whole project's going to be $300,000, the most we would, I think, offer to these people would be a 50-50 split, so this figure could come down conceivably. I would think $200,000 would be the maximum of the city's contribution, but both these property owners have expressed the desire to do something with their buildings. We had some preliminary discussions with a local financial institution that wants to get involved with the city and would work with these building owners with some low-interest loans. So, as soon as we get the figures back from the estimator, then we'll actually have some hard dollars to know what we were working with. But I think it would be very generous of the city to, you know, put a cap of $200,000 that we would be our contribution towards a facade renovation.
Oh, is there owing two business owners on this?
There's two owners of the three buildings, the three target buildings.
So, we're going, just go ahead and commit the $200,000 to business owners?
Well, we haven't committed anything yet.
Oh, you just made a statement that put the city $200,000.
Well, it's up for discussion, but we have to start somewhere.
We have that discussion tonight, or do we have it in budget time?
I really don't want to have that discussion.
No, I think it would make sense to get the final estimate from the estimator, so then actually, we will have some dollars, you know...
Okay, and then the front street.
The front street parking lot, that figure, early on in this project, I kind of walked the project area with Bill Blecky from Baxter Woodman. The city does own about 90% of that parking lot in front of those buildings, so as part of this project, the plan is to redo the sidewalks in front of these buildings.
Okay.
We call make them pedestrian-friendly and relocate.
That's fine. I thought this was further in the whole parking lot, the train parking park. That's fine.
No, this is basically to redo the parking lot between Elmwood and Walnut.
Solomon Woods, did you have a question? Okay. Does John or Brad, the train station, maintenance of the train station, where's... does that come under administration or somewhere else?
Into the train station?
Yeah.
That comes under the general operating budget, so it's not part of this document.
Okay. All right, continue.
Sure, unless there's any further comment on this, we're then done with the miscellaneous section, and we'll move into the water and sewer section.
Just so everyone knows, we're going to page what? What are we stepping at?
Yeah, through the end of the water section, and then there's one comment on one of the unfunded projects that the manager would like to make.
One, I'm going to give him one.
So, again, with the summary page here, and each one of these has a detail sheet, so don't want to specifically dwell on this.
We're on page...
Too long here.
What page?
Page 40 of the hard copy, page 43 of the PDF. Yes, I don't want to dwell too long here, because they each have their own detail pages, so... And then, again, their own detailed pages, just the summaries for quick reference. So, moving into the first one, maintenance of reservoir tanks three, four, and five. Three and four have been done in previous years, so fiscal 14 is predominantly the maintenance of reservoir tank number five. And so, just be the similar approach.
They think they're playing hangman over there.
Similar approach that was taken with tanks three and four.
Keep going.
Addison Road water main replacement. You may recall, the last two years, work was done on... you can see there from Forest Reserve to Elizabeth. This next... this last phase will complete Addison Road from Potter North to Irving Park. Just complete the upgrades of the water mains along Addison Road.
Okay. If I see a hand raised up, I'll stop you, so...
The water supervisory radio upgrades is effectively the SCADA system for the water side. There's also SCADA for the wastewater side. And this project has been discussed for quite a while, but with the new admin building over at Public Works, the north treatment plant, this project will go in after that building has been constructed. No use putting in brand-new equipment to tear the building down after reinstall it again. So, once that admin building goes in, then this project will begin to move forward.
That wasn't going to be my question. Isn't this part of the... Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's related only in regards to the fact that it's going to go in the new admin building that's being constructed as part of the treatment plant upgrades, but the SCADA system for the water system, the water supply system is a separate technical entity from the wastewater side of things. This is the SCADA system for the portable water versus the sanitary sewer system. Mill Road water main replacement, this is out in fiscal 17. And it lines up with some road resurfacing as well, so...
We're zipping through this.
Murray Drive, another one out in fiscal 18, designed in fiscal 17.
Keep going.
South Cedar, water main replacement. This was one of the ones that previously was a little bit further out in 16 or 17, I believe, but as we discussed earlier, with the significant number of main breaks they've had out there, it got moved up. And as previously mentioned as well, we're going to do some stormwater improvements out there and then resurface the whole area. So, we're going to try to maximize our efficiencies out there on this one and do everything at once. Next one is Montrose. Similar approach as the South Cedar, it was further out program-wise, but due to the high concentration of main breaks, it got moved up. And then, again, the requisite resurfacing on top of the water main project.
Oh, you have a question?
The treatment plant expansion. I think you're all familiar with that and the costs associated with that.
May, are you stretching, or you want a question?
Quick question. Quick question. Are we still on target to go out for bid for the second phase of this?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, that works. Okay, that works.
I'm kind of laid back in these.
The INI Study. As you're aware, the last couple of years, RJN's been doing the INI Study for the city. And I believe, in speaking with Mr. Galis this morning, he said it's a nine-year program. It's a nine-year program to complete the whole city.
What's I, I stand for again?
I N I.
I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, okay. No questions. Keep going. Oh, page fifty.
The North and South Belt Filter Press Repairs. There are three belt filter presses between the two facilities. They were all in need of some repair. The first one was done in fiscal twelve. One is completed here in thirteen, and then the last one will be completed in the next fiscal year. So, all three of the belt presses will have been rehabbed, renovated, and should be ready to go for years to come. The South Treatment Plant Chlorine Scrubber. I think this was discussed a little bit before, but there's currently vapor chlorine down there. And so, there is the, the risk of exposure by the employees. And this would help significantly improve the safety and well-being of the employees, especially should there be some sort of leak or accident within the facility down there.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Elizabeth Pump Drive Station. Elizabeth Drive Pump Station, excuse me. This is kind of a new one that's come up. It's going to be, need to be replaced according to the guys at the water system. But until the Treatment Plant Project 1B is done, all the requirements and pressurization is not going to be announced. That's why it's kicked out to eighteen to give the Treatment Plant time to come online and work through all those technicalities.
Keep going.
And that's the end of the water section. So, we're to the unfunded projects. Just a quick note about the unfunded projects. There were a number of drainage projects that were in the unfunded section before. With the completion of the citywide stormwater plan, those have been removed or otherwise incorporated into the plan we talked about earlier this evening. So, those have since dropped off the list, so we're pretty much just to those six. Most of which have, all of which have been on before and you're all probably familiar with in various regards. And the manager does have one.
It can be a long discussion about unfunded projects, but we'll try to tackle it. Okay. Jeff, you want to add into this before I, or we'll just go to Alderman first? Which one do you want to do? Because Brad said you wanted to add some. Under this? Was bring it out and then we'll bring in the questions.
Just real quick, I just wanted to touch base on the new Public Works Facility. I know at one time we were talking about, you know, looking into a new facility. And as part of that facility, there were some discussions about finding some space for a facility that would have room for salt storage capabilities. With the extreme, lack of extreme weather these days with the snow, we, we, we seem to be having a bit of a, a salt storage problem and the unpredictable nature of salt these days. And we're going to have quite a bit of, of, of salt left on our hands. So, that being said, I'm just curious, staff does have some recommendations moving down the line for some salt. But to keep all options open, we want, we were just curious if the council wanted to reinvestigate, maybe sharing some space with the FD. I know we had talked about that one time with the fire district. Because none of our scenarios are, are all that great for our salt storage. So, if we're open to maybe looking at that fire district site again when we present, maybe that would be helpful and know if the council's open to that. Or else we won't waste time with it.
I would think that would be something that just goes on the public works, right?
Well, I'm in favor of going back and visit, but before I go back and revisit that, I would like the council approval to go back and talk to the fire district and try to arrange it again. But last time we did this, it was like take a knife and stab me in the back on it last time. So, I'm asking that, I think the reason why you bring this up is, do you want us to move forward? To discuss this with the fire district again and bring the proposal back to you? Or do you not want us to do anything and we take the gamble? So, that's the senses that I had because if you want us to continue to dialogue with the fire district and go relook at it, we would be more happy to. But I just don't want the staff to spend the time like we did last time and then we'll all say, we didn't do anything. So, that was the option.
Mr. Mayor, is it regarding to the, regarding to the?
Yes. Yeah, and going to the salt dome, I think part of the problem was when we were over by the fire district, some of the council members had a problem because it was. I know there's already a dome there. There's one there with the township. Some of the council members had a problem because it's right behind the residents' homes. I think that was part of the issue. And it was a couple of other little things, but. So, before we waste staff time.
You stretch and go, Jeff?
I was just going to say, the mayor's right, it was more of an aesthetic thing before. I don't want to get into a long drawn out debate. I just want to know, as long as we're on the public works and salt, should we investigate this FD option? Or is it just totally off the table?
Well, let's see what my counter partner over there has to say.
I had mentioned it to the chief at the last luncheon I was at. He said he would entertain it, but I drove over there to take a look at it. And it really doesn't have any good access for us to get in and out. So, if nothing else, and if you come in through their lots, and, and my fear is that they just redid the lots, they're going to worry about us tearing up the streets. We have to go further into their lot where their overhead doors open or put in new gates on the other side to access it. So, there might be some complications involved if we get it going. And it might be just as well to, to research some other alternatives. I'm, we're going to continue the conversation, but I'm not so sure that it's going to work out no longer.
I'm not so sure either. All of our options stink. They all have big problems, so, but we just want to know if that's an option to look at.
I didn't ask the question, he did. Don't look at me. Okay. Oh, stretching.
Could we get those options next week at next week's committee meeting?
I thought we was not having a committee meeting.
No, at least hear what the options are. I mean, as part of a committee discussion.
Council, you mean?
No, next week's committee.
Okay.
Council's the same.
That's right.
I think that would be a little rushed. Maybe the first committee in February would be a little bit.
Well, just to hear what some of the options are so we can start the dialogue.
Packet comes out tomorrow.
We have a.
At least on Tuesday, give us that option sheet.
We have a new public works director.
At least information only type deal we can discuss.
You think you could get that information?
Sure, why not? Sure.
You think you could get us that information, Mr. Public Works?
Yeah, he can get it, sure.
I'm asking him.
I said he can get it because I'm his boss, so he's going to get it.
Whoa.
Getting rough now.
Moving right along.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I bring up one more unfunded thing?
Go ahead.
I really would like to, since, since right now, the new public works facility is going to be off the, off the table for a while now. I have a concern about the public works concrete floor. To me, it's starting to become, we pushed it off so long, I, I think we running into a safety issue over there that it's, it's deteriorating over there and we have pushed it off. And Mark, you've been there too, it's falling apart.
How about?
So, even if we resurface it, or some get a price and see what it costs and then, and then see.
How about we have some pictures brought to us next week and then, and then take it from there?
Nah, I'll bring it back up to committee down the line. I, I'm not going. He's got too much to do now with the salt dome and everything else, a couple of weeks.
Well, okay. I mean, if we could, I'm sure if we could get some pictures so the council could see it too. We're talking, he's talking about the floor. I take it. You know what he's talking about?
Yeah, but I, I guess I heard you want options for the salt, for salt storage.
Oh, that was before, now we're on the floor.
I know, I guess, I'm unclear as to.
Oh, the options?
I'm unclear as to what you would like in terms of those options. Maybe I can, I can ask this council for a little bit more guidance in terms of what you'd like to see on that.
Ask your boss.
Hold on one. Can I make a comment?
Sure you can.
Jeff, you said you have some options. You just said that you had a few options, but you really don't like them. That's all I was wanting to hear, what those options that you said you had were, that's all.
We've got a couple of scenarios. They're not good.
Do you want to hear them, Mr. Mayor? No? Yeah, well.
Well, we can discuss it at committee. I don't, I don't know if everybody's ready to make a.
I'll talk.
Okay. Art Woods.
I'm assuming one of the options is they hold the salt, we pay the fine. They won't hold it at all? Well, that's not an option. Then I'm confused.
Eleven thousand tons by when? Okay.
Everybody do a snow dance.
Oh, no. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I got one. I got one.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick, and we have the Irving Park Water Main is unfunded, but I thought a third of that should be taken out and moved over to the safety improvement.
Is direct to him now?
There is a, a large chunk of the water main within the boundaries of the safety improvement project. That's being engineered for, that's, that's covered through grant monies. There is a strong likelihood that eighty percent of the construction costs would be covered by the federal government. There is a small likelihood that the remaining twenty percent would be covered by somebody other than us. As far as the rest of the Irving Park Road Water Main, nothing has been done to date. It was budgeted to be engineered in this fiscal year. However, we're reexamining and making sure that that needs to be done at this time so we don't, we're not wasteful with just engineering for the hell of it.
Right. No, but I was just saying, the number we had here, a third of that's probably going to be taken care of.
The, the number in this CIP is probably a little high.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else, Brad? If not, we're done for tonight.
Just a quick point of clarification. As has been pointed out, there is some additional items in here, equipment replacement, fleet, stuff like that. So, we, so we either need to cover that at the committee meeting next week or the one on February fourteenth.
I don't know what the schedule looks like. Where's our shorter schedule? Let's when we do it. If it's the fourteenth.
Yeah, we can, we can do it next week. I just wanted to point out that there was a few more pages to, to cover next week. So. Next week.
It'll be next week?
Correct.
Okay. So, what are you asking?
Just pointing out the fact that there's a little bit to go through next week.
Oh, so you don't, okay.
Well, she said we were done after page fifty.
Okay. We'll continue from page fifty-five, right? I'd like to, oh. Items be considered for future meeting residential financial agreement, February, remote attendance, February budget, twenty-fourteenth in February. Make a motion for adjournment. On favor? Okay.
Oh, Eugene's got it all.
Oh, yeah. Call Public Works meeting, make the take or same people are present. It's a following shark, he left the building. Approval of January tenth, two thousand thirteen minutes. I'll make that motion. On favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item number four, I will do a recommendation that we table this item at this time.
Second. Is that motion?
That is my motion. I have a second. All in favor, or well, there's no discussion. Okay, item number five, items considered for future meeting. I will revisit the salt dome or whatever we're going to do with the salt. I will revisit the, the Treatment Plant scenario that we just tabled. That will be my, any other items? And computers. GIS. So, I will make a term of motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Have to, have to do this. This was a special meeting. Just need a roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman Chocky? Alderman Coles? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Quorum present. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever and ever.
Mr. Mayor, I will ask that Public Works Committee, that this item be tabled to the next committee meeting to discuss. This will be my motion on the floor.
Do we have a second? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.